Monday, March 3 meeting of the Board of Select. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the fire, the United States of America, and the community public, which stands one nation under God, equal, civil, liberty, and justice for all.
Under unanticipated, I received, and I believe Mr. Fraley has received, a complaint about the vocalization that we're not speaking into the microphones enough when we speak. So, Board members, would you please make sure you articulate well into the microphones so that people, the folks back home can hear us? I know that the folks out there don't want to hear us, but they showed up, so that's their problem. All right. First item, unanticipated. Do Board members have anything under unanticipated? No?
Actually, Mr. Chair, just very quickly, I just want to remind everyone that the Board cannot respond to unsigned letters. So if you have something that you need to get to the Board, all you have to do is sign your name. We don't bite, but, you know, we cannot respond to just blank letters that are not signed. Thanks.
Any unanticipated from the audience? Okay. Under unannouncements, it's come to my attention that our moderator, Wayne Perkins, has had minor surgery, and in my opinion, there is no such thing as minor surgery, but he had minor surgery and he's home recovering now, so let's keep him in your thoughts and prayers, make sure he pulls through this okay, and we can have him at the town meeting. Any other announcements? Board members? Oh. Of course.
Of course. Mr. Chair, if I may. Okay. I would like to congratulate the Middleborough Mayflower Lodge of Ancient Free and Accepted Masons, which was organized on March 4, 1864, and chartered in 1865 in Middleborough. They are celebrating their 150th year tomorrow, March 4. It's been a very active lodge. You know, probably know a lot of the members around town. A couple things about it, in August 16, 1864, Charles S. Stratton, that's Tom Thumb, actually attended the lodge. And November 4, 1873, for the dedication of the Town Hall here in Middleborough, they were invited and in attendance. So they have about 200 active members now, and they're having their big 150 tomorrow.
Thank you. Mr. Quell?
Brian, thank you.
Nothing? Okay. Next item on the agenda, then. Any announcements? Oh, okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, my name is Brian Jupinoni. I'm a school committee member, and I just want to make mention that this Thursday is our, one of our regularly scheduled school committee meetings, and the public is invited to attend. It is at the Nichols Middle School at 6:30. It's a light agenda, this meeting. One of the items we'll be discussing is the revised state bullying laws have to be incorporated into our bullying plans, our bullying policy, to make sure that we're up to snuff. But what's also going to get announced is our tentative date to discuss the school budget, the public hearing that we hold for the school budget, is scheduled right now for Thursday, April 3. So that'll be the, Thursday, April 3 will be the budget hearing, which is open to the public as well, where we discuss all the finer points of the budget. I know they come in, our superintendent, Dr. Weiss, does come in and kind of do a presentation here to the Board, but if anyone else wanted to be at that one, I just want to get that on their calendars. It's a month away, but something there. But this week, 6:30, like I said, it's a light agenda, but I'd just like to let everyone know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Brian. Did you, has the school committee had a discussion on the start of school next year?
Yes.
Date? And you guys have already voted on it?
It's been voted on, the calendar has been voted on for the start of school. The first day of school for grades 1 through 12 will be the Wednesday before Labor Day, and students will go to school Wednesday, Thursday, have Friday off, have Monday Labor Day off, and then continue with school on Tuesday after Labor Day. This is the first time this has happened in Middleborough. Kidnappers go back later, a day later, they start a day later, but that's just how, kindergarten always typically start a day afterwards. But it's two days before Labor Day, teachers go back to Monday, they actually are there for Monday and Tuesday doing full training, two full days of training right before the school year, so they can use their training into their school year. It was voted at the last meeting for that calendar date. And then the last day of school tentatively is June 12, based on that calendar, for 2015.
All right. Thank you.
Brian, before you leave, how are you doing on snow days this year?
I believe we're at June 22nd is the last, June 22nd is the last day, I think, right now.
Moved up to the Thursday?
We're not too bad. Last year, we went right up to the penultimate moment. In fact, teachers met on that last, their last day of school was the Friday before July 1. It was tough. We didn't do as badly. We actually did save one, one day that we, a lot of schools canceled, and we didn't. There was a lot of them canceled that they shouldn't have maybe, but Dr. Weiss does a pretty good job working with our DPW director, Chris Peck, as well as the police department. She's in contact with everybody who knows the Dons. And I won't say it's a pretty good team working around that, the snow, because as everyone knows, it could be 10 inches of snow in North Middleborough and nothing down at Leilani's house.
Or vice versa.
Or vice versa. So these microclimates, and Dr. Weiss does a pretty good job with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements or recognitions? Okay. I want to entertain a motion relative to the February 10 executive session meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. You guys have it. Would entertain a motion relative to the February 24, 2014, regular meeting, regular meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Abstain.
One abstention. Mr. Quell abstains. The ayes still have it. Would entertain a motion to authorize the chairman, or as needed, sign the warrants for the week ending 2/28/2014.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. From the Allison Ferreira, the Secretary of the Commission on Disability, we have a letter here indicating they wish to have appoint Megan McDonald as a new member of the Commission on Disability, the term to expire on July of 2014. Ms. McDonald attended our Commission on Disability meeting on February 12 and expressed sincere interest in joining the Commission. Attached, please find her a letter of interest, which is included. Comments of the Board? Questions of the Board?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Fraley?
I've had occasion to meet Megan a couple of times, and I think she'll be a fantastic addition to the Commission.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Pleasure of the Board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Well, while I'm getting the next thing up here, wherever it may be, can I ask a question that somebody might be able to answer of you IT wizards? Why is it that when I click on this, I get an image of last week's?
You're clicking it.
Paper or document, and then this week's document.
I was having that problem last week. I'm not having it this week. What are you calling up? New business?
Well, I'm, right now, I'm on the Middleborough Fire Department letter relative to the ground vic, but when I press and slide up, I get an image of last week's, and then it flashes to this week, this week's.
Anybody else having that problem? Can we check out Steve's machine this week and see if there's something specific to that? Although I can tell you, I was having that problem last week for some reason, and I don't understand why one machine would be bothered and the other ones wouldn't be. It doesn't add up to me, but I'm no IT wizard either. But we'll check it out. Has anybody else been having that problem with theirs? Okay. So it may be that it's something specific to that.
But it's creators, is what it is. You're all having the trouble, you just don't want to say it, right?
I've had other issues. Sometimes it just dies on me.
I was going to suggest that it's all in the chairman's head, but.
No, last week, remember, I couldn't even find my town manager's report. I had January 27th, so, and, you know, I couldn't explain that either, so.
I think it may be one or two of the iPads. We don't always get the same one, so, yeah.
We'll mark Steve's and.
I'll mark it.
No, no, no.
Okay. Back to, and for the press, you will now notice that Mr. Fraley has indicated that there is something in my head. So I'd like to see comments in the paper on that. Middleborough Fire Department has requested to, they want to declare surplus, a 2003 Crown Victoria sedan, car number 95. Vehicle has, it's a recycled police cruiser with 165,465 miles on it. It's outlived its usefulness, and the repair cost would be too high on it. Pleasure of the Board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is to approve a one-day liquor license for Bill Secundary. Lucky's Liquors, or location is going to be 200 Oak Point Drive on April 9, 2014, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. This is a full liquor license. Comments from the Board? Questions of the Board? Pleasure of the Board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. A letter for Shoe Shop Place. We want to send this to Aaron Gorstein, undersecretary, Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. It indicates that we have resolved the issues surrounding the financing?
Well, it was really about the application. They took issue with some, a couple of matters in the application last year. The financial strength of the organization, the nonprofit that's doing the development, and its stability. So they brought in another nonprofit as a partner that's a little, that's significantly stronger than they are. So if, in any, you know, event that, you know, the taunting organization was not able to complete the project, the Boston organization could. So I talked to Kate Racer myself last week, two weeks ago. She's happy with the changes that have been made. She finds them satisfactory. She suggested that we send this letter in, because community support is very important to these decisions. So I also asked Senator Pacheco to send a similar letter in as well, which he's agreed to do. And hopefully, the fifth time is the charm.
This is the sixth time, though, isn't it?
No, this would be the fifth.
This is the fifth.
This would be the fifth, yeah. We've been through four rounds, this would be the fifth.
Can we, would it be possible to send, to contact our representatives, the three representatives we have in town?
Sure.
And see if they will buy into this also?
Sure.
And get letters of support? If we've got four different representatives, a senator and three representatives.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. We certainly should.
All right. So with that caveat, pleasure of the Board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Concerns, issues? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is a vote to approve payment of an invoice for Atlantic Design Engineers for a peer review of an earth removal permit, application for 288 Thompson Street, the applicants to reimburse the town for this expense, and this is $1,072.50. Comments or questions? Pleasure of the Board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Well, we are going to be continuing hearing at 7:30, which is 10 minutes from now. So right now, why don't we go to the town manager's report?
Chairman, I gave you tonight your budget books, and inside, you have the departmental requests for their budgets. They're based on level-funded budgets, and anything that a department wanted above and beyond level funding, they put in a separate form, a request for new funding. That amount appears in a separate column on the spreadsheet, which precedes each of the departmental budgets. And then also, we have a special funds worksheet. So if a department has access to funds outside of the general fund that are substantial, in this case, in excess of $10,000, we ask them to report on that as well and to budget those funds. So you'll have, you know, similar to what we have at town meeting, it goes in order of departmental numbers, and sort of give you a chance just to review what the departments are asking for. Friday, I'll give you my recommendations in a separate memo, and then, of course, on Monday next, you'll start your budget hearings, and we have three nights of budget hearings coming up, and thereafter, you'll make your recommendation to the Finance Committee. So, you know, we will, Wednesday, we hear about health care from the GIC. That's, you know, what I wanted to wait for before giving you anything. And then in mid-April, we'll hear about what the House is going to recommend in terms of a, you know, a local aid number. That'll give us a little bit more information. I don't expect anything radically different from where we are now in either event, but I just wanted to make sure of the health care number before being my recommendation, so.
So health care number is our big bugaboo, really?
Yeah, it's the big nut. You know, it's the thing that could, you know, that makes us or breaks us. You know, the change in health care, going to the GIC is going to allow us to balance the budget this year, that was very significant, so.
You don't anticipate getting any more money in local aid?
No, I think we, I think we'll get a little bit amount of money.
You've been hearing nothing but improved tax receipts to the state.
Well, if you read the Beacon this month, Jeff Beckwith points out that the increase in local aid the governor proposed was about 2.4%, and the overall increase in revenue was more like 4.6%. So why wouldn't we at least get, you know, something, you know, that tracks the growth in revenue? Yeah, I think we will get some, you know, some additional, probably, general government aid. I hope we'll get more school aid. I think that's where it could really be most beneficial to us. That's our largest portion of state aid, and any, even a small percentage increase translates into a lot of dollars. So that's always been my request to our legislators, to fight, you know, for bigger increases in school aid, because that will benefit us more. We get a relatively small amount of general government aid, and, you know, a normal percentage increase there doesn't net us very much money. So we net more on school aid if we get a larger proportion in school aid.
On the financing, the chapter 90 for roads, do you see any increase in that?
Well, you know, they're certainly pushing hard to get that extra $100 million. That was a big portion, you know, they talk about the hearing on the transportation bond bill, and, you know, that is a constant theme of the MMA, to push for that. The candidates at the MMA conference this year were all asked about what they do, about, of course, they would give it to us tomorrow if they're just elected. So, yeah, hopefully, that, you know, usually that will come, you know, it may not come right away, but, you know, usually that increase will, I mean, the legislature gave him the money, he just didn't release it. So hopefully, at some point, either he'll release it or somebody else will.
The tied with that is our road survey?
Mm-hmm.
Which will maybe assist us.
Yeah, relatively soon, we'll have some results, and it'll show us where we stand. You know, and it'll, you know, give us some recommendations and, you know, ways of hopefully funding. Yes. I mean, we did, you know, we, you know, you all got the same letter I got about precinct street, and granted, the precinct street is in terrible shape. The trouble is, it's 2.3 miles, and it needs not only a total reconstruction, it needs to be raised out of the wetlands. So we're going to have to put down a whole lot of material to get it to the point where investing in it makes any sense. We'll have to install drainage. You know, it's easily over a million-dollar project just for one road. As you know, we get about $800,000 a year for all our roads. So we would have to commit more than a year's funding just to do that one road right, and that's always been the dilemma. But, you know, as you said, once we get that report, we're going to have to figure it out, because it can't stay like that forever. We have to find a way of funding it and doing something with it.
We've got 200-odd miles of road, and it could be more than, we think it's 207, it could be more than that.
Yeah, we got a lot of road.
When we get finished. Awful lot of money, and.
It's expensive infrastructure. It's expensive to maintain.
$800,000 a year, this doesn't seem to be cutting it.
No, it's not enough.
It's just not enough money. All right. Go on to our correspondence. Of course, this week, we, a huge number of two. Nobody wants to talk about any of them, so.
I mentioned it last week, remember?
I wish I'd dragged some over from last week. Anybody want to talk about anything on this correspondence? Okay.
Is anybody going to the transportation breakfast?
I'm going to try.
I am.
I'll be there.
You all set to go for that?
Oh, yeah.
Have you registered?
Yep. All set.
Is there a charge for that?
$25.
$25.
Okay. Well, you can tell them we need, you know, 20, 30 million.
Give me a list, I'll take it with me.
Let's get the rotary date fixed, and then we can beat them up about.
That's what I intend to do. Just so that everyone out there knows, the guest speaker there will be Richard Davy, Secretary of the Department of Transportation, so important to us from Middleborough and our rotary.
I had a good conversation, actually, with Ryan McNeil last week, because I called him up finally to thank him for all the work he put into the rotary design. And he, you know, he says they've been working really hard. They're, you know, going to be able to come out here in a couple of weeks, hopefully, and show us some, you know, refined ideas about, you know, our preferred alternative, and they're really pushing forward on this. So it was really good to hear that, you know, that they're, you know, they're not missing a beat, and it continues to move in the background, even though, you know, we haven't been directly involved in it. So they are going to appoint that task force that was mentioned, and, you know, we'll be hearing about that, I think, fairly soon. I think, in fact, the secretary's going to come to Middleborough to do that at some point, I'm told by Senator Pacheco. So, you know, things continue to move on the rotary, which is, which is very good news.
Well, it's 7:30, so we will, we're continuing a hearing discussing with Arthur Bastini?
Bastini.
Bastini. I'm getting closer by the day. For a possible bakery and this.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
This has a purpose.
I know it does.
It's not just to adjourn the meeting.
Now it is happening on my iPad, too. I'm seeing last week's.
It's happening to you?
Flash, and when you move it, it goes.
Oh, you better tell the town manager, because he thinks it's in my head.
Now that's happening with mine as well.
Now I just think that it's the Republicans.
I'm not a Republican anymore.
It's a plot. It's a plot.
I'm sorry. We are very serious up here occasionally, so we'll be serious now. Go ahead, go for it. What do you got?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having me back. So tonight, I'd like to talk to you about some of the updates that I have, that you have in your file, as well as some others. Not included in the cover letter that you received last week, I also have an update with the Board of Health. I was able to meet with them the afternoon that I gave you the letter, actually. That was the first available time that they were able to meet. And I got the thumbs up from Catherine, Health Inspector. She took a look at the plans and talked about some things that could be issues in the future as far as walls and ceiling coverings, but that would come in a later conversation when we were deciding specific coverings for that. And if you'd like to look at the plans, I can walk you through the initial plans. I'll move myself over. So you'll see in the first map that you have of South Main Street, this is actually Plymouth Savings Bank, when it was back then, so it's present day, but it was Plymouth Savings. And this is the blown-up map of that that includes the conference room, as well as the restrooms. If you look at the second drawing, that's what I'd like to do for removal initially. So that would include removing the teller counter, removing the partitions here that the town had some interest in saving, removing the partition wall in the center here in between the viewing booths, as well as removing these walls here next to, there's a brick wall that's existing here. So just removing the wooden walls here to open up the space. From there, I would like to build a new wall, which you can see in the third drawing. So that wall would extend out just past where the teller counter is existing now, come over angle, just like the teller counter does, and meet up with this wall where the ATM used to be. In this, I would have two large windows, so people could see into the kitchen while I was baking, and then the customer counter would be out front with seating around the windows. I'd like to convert the vaults into a walk-in refrigerator and freezer. That would be a discussion with Refrigeration Company, to look into the feasibility of that. And then this would become an office area with that wall removed. If you look at the fourth drawing, that would be possible equipment placement. This is what the Board of Health looked at and gave their thumbs up for equipment placement as far as health and safety, as well as the hood vent, which you can see right about here above the oven and the range. And that would extend back to the alleyway here, where there's some existing vents on that outside wall in the alley. I also showed this plan to the Fire Department, had a conversation with them, which you have included of all the things that we would need to update for the existing fire system, which would include an antral system in the hood, which typically comes in with that and was installed with the hood. I also met with the Building Department and got their thumbs up. They didn't see any prominent issues with the plan as it was. And again, met with financing, which you got a letter from the bank about the future financing, which is as progressed as it can be without an approval. Something else that I have gotten since. Something else that I have gotten since is planning to meet with the Middleborough on the Move on Wednesday. I'll be meeting with them this Wednesday during their meeting, get to meet face to face with them. I also included some of the Facebook comments which I received from the town. After having the articles written in the Gazette and the Enterprise, I wanted to have a place for people in town to kinda come and get some, some information about the process and kind of what was going on with the bakery and the space. So I included some of those, some of those comments that I received. Within four hours of creating that webpage, there were over four hundred likes and within three days, there were over a thousand likes. So I think that was pretty amazing support from the town in that aspect. I've also, I included some figures, I got over twenty-five requests for employment so far with other small businesses being interested in supporting and working with the bakery, things like marketers, printing companies and the like as well. I also had a conversation, which isn't included here, that was last, beginning of this week, I had a conversation with Tammy Miller, who works at the high school, she coordinates the internships. And we spoke about how that program could work with the bakery. Typically, internships can't happen during first and second block, since first block starts at seven-ten and most businesses aren't open then. But we decided that I would be able to do two interns for AM, two for PM and then repeat that again for second semester. And that would be a viable option. She also suggested that it would be a possibility with the bakery of having a group of eight students or ten students be able to come then following school year, first schedule class during the block. She suggested that as an option as well and they would get credit for that.
Scheduled the classes during the block?
The block is, is a period at the high school. So they would actually get credit for those, that would be a course set up through the school. So that's one option through the school system as well. I've also spoken to Mr. Branning, the principal, at the high school about creating a scholarship the following school year for students that wanna go to culinary school. They really wanna foster that learning throughout that school with the food industry and, and help those kids grow and learn as much as they can and be successful. And the last paragraph that you have in your cover letter was kind of an idea of a proposed timeline that I would like to see with the Board of Selectmen and myself. Ideally, for the bakery to be as successful as it could be, opening would be in June or July of this year. So I would have that whole summer season to get that foot traffic and get exposure and then lead into the holidays and then get into the winter. As far as that goes, for that to happen, the timeline that I proposed would be any discussion, clarifying questions today, hopefully an approval today, which would open it up to negotiate any exact lease terms in an executive session over the next two weeks. With an approval today, I'd be able to continue the financing process and be able to have that secure within four to six weeks and have those ones available at that time with the line of credit and the equipment leasing loan, which would put me at the beginning to mid, middle of April for the process to be complete and then have the renovation constructions begin at that time and then be done. We estimated two to three months for those renovations to do what I just talked about there. Any questions?
This seems to be a very aggressive timeline. Is it a doable timeline, no?
I believe it is, I've spoken to my contractor, he's come in, we've talked about what needed to be done and people that we would need to do it. And it looks like two to three months would be, would be feasible for that timeline.
How are you gonna vent this? You don't have an oven there, how are you gonna vent that out?
There's a drop ceiling, so you can vent right out where it would be and it would go straight back to the alleyway, that back wall, so it wouldn't be out on the facade of the building. And there are already existing vents on that wall.
And you say you, you've talked to a bank about financing, but you just talked to them so far, you haven't started paperwork with them?
Well, I have, I've already met with them, the checking accounts are already set up. The business, it's already incorporated as an S corp. So really, the next step, we just can't do anything else, move forward with that until I have the leased space. That's as far as I can go, until I have the space secured.
Questions of the board?
You're an Eagle Scout?
No, my brother is.
Oh, all right, I thought somebody mentioned that you were an Eagle Scout.
Almost. Life scout.
But you, you graduated from the Culinary Institute of America?
I did. My associate's degree is from there in baking and pastry and my bachelor's degree is also from there, in baking and pastry management. So I do restaurant and bakery management.
And you're a school teacher as well?
Yes, I teach at Middleborough High School right now. I teach the foods program in family and consumer science as well as family development and I also teach, I've had two sections of chemistry this year.
Have you run a bakery? I know you, you worked at the, where is it, the Black Dog?
The Black Dog, I've worked at the Black Dog, I've worked at the Southfield Store, a few other places in New York that I've worked while I was at school and working with those people to run. Basically have that assistant experience and now I'd like to start my own.
I like the idea.
Thanks.
But it's, it doesn't mean much right now, I don't wanna get your hopes up. No, I'm intrigued by it, I really am. I've worked in restaurants for far too long and I know how brutal it can be too. So I just wanted to make sure you knew what you were getting into.
I do, I've been working in restaurants since I was sixteen, since I was legally allowed to.
You have a business plan?
I do, what you have is an abbreviated version of that to see the projected monthly expenses and it builds in food costs into the projected daily sales, which based on the response from the town, I would expect to be higher, but I left it as is for a conservative estimate for sales. Based on the projected expenses and sales, you can see projected profit for daily, monthly and the year along with gross sales and what the expenses would be based on the estimated equipment purchasing cost.
What about marketing?
I've been working with one marketer in particular, who I went to school with. She grew up in town and she's starting her own marketing business as well. She's currently doing some market research for me, it would be building my website. I've already started a Facebook page, which is a great marketing tool as far as getting the town involved with that.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, so you've filled out your application for financing but can't not complete it until?
Right, we can't do anything else until we have the space secured.
If we were to go into a contract with you, we would have to have something in there that said it would have to be dependent on that financing coming through, you understand that, right?
Yes.
Okay. How many employees are you planning?
Right now, the estimations that I included here, it depends on what their, how many hours they would work, but it would be if I had the equivalent of about four employees working about thirty-five hours a week. But that could change if I have one working twenty and then another working, another twenty. So it depend on the schedule.
And I had talked to you about this, we're all for helping businesses and in the beginning, keeping the low rent. But even on a TIF, every year, the tax increases until it gets to what the, the market is or what the actual assessed value would be. Would you be open to setting a schedule like that?
Absolutely.
Okay, it just, like I said, we could not enter into anything unless it was contingent on you getting your financing. Would have to be there, because we don't wanna set you up for failure either.
Right.
You know, we want this to succeed. We're all sick of seeing that building empty and bakery smells real good, I mean, sounds real good, so.
And that's a catch twenty-two, I can't move forward with the financing without the, the space and then we can't move forward to have a, a set lease without that contingency built in, so.
Well, good evening, good to see you again.
Thanks.
Yeah, I, I'm a big fan of bakeries. I think this would be a fabulous centerpiece for the town, everybody loves bakeries. I think they have the ability to not only get the local community, but they have the ability to draw people off the beaten trail or, or, you know, otherwise, people will travel to a bakery.
Or on the way to the Cape or back.
Well, you know, I, I know, you know, we have friends that are, that own a bakery in Plymouth and people come as a special trip to get bread and things that they otherwise can't get in the supermarket, certainly not that quality. Your resume is very impressive, by the way. I don't understand why you wouldn't be approved for financing. I just want, like I said, like, my colleagues have hinted at, and I'm, this is not on you, I'm just trying to get an idea exactly what it is this, this lender is asking you for. So they're not willing to run your financials or anything like that in the serious application process until they understand that you have entered into a lease agreement for the space.
Right.
Okay, I mean, that's not what I would call an industry standard, but, you know, it's just, it's, you know, like I said, it's not on you, I'm just kinda trying to get, I'm trying to get inside his head without him being here, why exactly that's been a holdup for him, that he's not at least able to give you a, a strong idea of where you stand.
And it may be a lease agreement itself, but having the space set where it would be, where it is approved by the platform.
Okay.
Being a town-owned building.
Do you, and, you know, we would need that, as was hinted to, but do you feel that that would be an obstacle to you if we were to have to put that in there? I mean, I don't see any way around it, I'm just trying to get your feeling of where you're coming from.
I think that would be beneficial for both parties.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think that would be an option.
When's the next time you'll be, is it Mr. Regan, am I saying that right? Is that who you're speaking to? When's the next communication you'll have with him?
I can see it coming tomorrow.
Okay, okay. Because like you say, you seem to be on, as the chairman pointed out, an aggressive time, I wanna be holding you up at the same time. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. I'm excited about the project, I, I like the idea. It seems like you've talked to the right people in town, you've gotten the police depart, the fire department to take a look and, you know, I'm not interested in micromanaging what you're doing, I don't wanna see that happen, I've seen it happen in the town before. Pay your rent and I'm good, I don't need more details than that. I'd like to.
I've got some checks already, if you. For first and last, it's ready.
Give me money and you're happy, right?
Yeah, I think we can work out reasonable rent. I don't care about your marketing or anything else like that, I hope you succeed, I really do. But that's on you and I'm ready to give you approval for this so you can start moving forward.
Thank you.
Town manager, you have comments, questions?
Well, I think as long as we, you know, I think we can work out a lease agreement, you know, over the next couple of weeks and, you know, as long as we build in the contingencies about, you know, being able, you know, I think we give him a certain amount of time to be able to, you know, perform and, you know, if that doesn't happen then, you know, the lease, you know, terminates or doesn't become effective and see, see how it goes.
We're having work with you and Tammy, Tom.
Yeah, with, you know, we, we have a basic form of lease from the bank, so I would imagine we would just take that and modify it.
If we, if the board elects to go ahead with this?
Yeah, I'll, I'll work it out with, with Dan and with Ann and Harper.
We'll figure it out. Any other questions of the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Are we gonna vote for a Google for this tonight or?
Yeah, I think what you would do is vote to award the property based on Arthur's response to RRP and we would then work on a lease agreement.
And that gives him the ability to go to his bank and say, cut the space.
He has a vote.
And then the lease agreement could be like that. So when we do the proper wording, we're gonna.
When you say the lease agreement, does that mean the rent?
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have more determines in it.
Is this the agreed price that we're talking about?
Well, no, we, you know, as a starting, you know, rent for the first year, but I think this, like Dolfie said, you know, it's gonna have, have some sort of escalator built into it. Whether we do this over, you know, we do a five-year and with an option for another five years or something like that, might be the fairest way of doing it.
Question. Charlie, are you, my understanding was we were going to negotiate the rent in an executive session? Are you saying we're using this template right now and then adjusting it?
No, no, I, I thought, you know, unless you want to meet specifically on the rent, I think we were going to put that together in the lease agreement and present it to you in, in, in that document.
I'm certainly comfortable letting Charlie figure out the rent part of it since he did the bank. I don't think anyone's here to quote what the bank is paying a month right now, so. It's just out of our realm of expertise.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think, from what I'm hearing, he needs to have some type of commitment that we're gonna make. We're, we would make a commitment to give him the space.
Right.
Then he goes to the bank, gets his much, gets his money, gets his money going, financing going. And at that time, when he tells the bank, I've got the commitment for space, they give you, give you a loan or.
Yep, that'll be.
Process your loan.
Right, that'll be four to six weeks.
And, and in the interim, you're gonna have to deal, there'll have to be a lease set up.
Right, what I'd like to do.
Given you, if the board votes on this thing, you're getting the space, all right. The bank says you gotta have a commitment for the space, you're gonna get a, you get, you might get a commitment for the space if they more elects that. But then you have to get the financing and everything's gonna be conditional, conditional upon your financing.
Correct.
Is that clear?
Correct.
Is that good?
Yeah, you know, it's just similar to what we've done when we've had RFPs for other properties. We've exchanged land with Mr. Bonfiglioli, we've had a few other things and, you know, we make the award and then that's subject to a purchase and sale agreement, you know, satisfactory to both parties. This will be an award subject to a, a lease satisfactory to both parties.
So you're not touching anything?
No, nope, and in.
No construction, no destruction.
In the proposed timeline, nothing's going on until at least the, the lease is, is signed and the financing is in place.
Right, and the lease has to go through.
Right, and that would be the mutually agreed upon negotiations.
So, everything's gotta be done through town council, so.
Correct.
Yes. Yes, miss? Good evening.
Jane Hope for the Historical Commission. I didn't hear anything, Arthur was talking at the last meeting about doing something in the conference room and I didn't hear anything about that tonight. I was wondering about whether there were any plans to do anything in that room that would affect the architectural details in that room, which I think are maybe, I don't know if there are, also if there are any other spaces in that first floor that have original detail. I don't, I think they've been all changed.
Yeah, I think it's only the conference room and we talked with Arthur about that last week and he's, you know, got a few things he's gonna do to that room, but nothing that's gonna affect the, you know, the wood paneling or anything like that, so he could speak for it himself.
Thanks, I forgot to mention that, actually, that was on my list. So in the conference room right now, you have the wood paneling and the wallpaper on the walls and would be green carpeting on the floor with the tables. The town already said that they would be taking the tables and chairs that are existing in there. So basically, what I'd be looking to do was doing some kind of floor covering, either floating floor on top of the carpet or saving the carpet for the town and installing the floating floor, so it wouldn't affect the integrity of the room. The walls will be left as, as they are and then I would just have work benches set up in a configuration, just freestanding, not installed for classes, for people. And then one possibility the Health Department mentioned was even installing a small hand sink in the corner, which wouldn't affect the wood paneling that would be through the floor attached to the existing plumbing on the other side of the wall.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Like to make a motion?
No, I'd like to close the hearing.
Okay, let's close the hearing.
Okay, let's close the hearing.
No problem to that. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, I want to close the hearing. Pleasure, the board, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to reapprove Arthur Bastini and Bastini's Bakery for One South Main Street, the RFP for the lease proposal contingent upon successful lease negotiations between Town Manager and Mr. Bastini.
Second.
Wording okay for you, Charlie? Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Guys have it. Okay, who's putting a gym next door to it?
Well, maybe instead of tables, we can just put treadmills. Ron, why you have your croissant?
Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So having nothing else on the agenda tonight, I think I would entertain a motion to adjourn. It's all moved.
Second.
We have a motion and, thank you, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Guys have it.
I gave mine to Jackie.
We are taking these home, Charlie?
Yeah, those are for you. You can take them home.